I wish to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for December the 11th, 2023. We ask that everyone please stand for our prayer and pledge of allegiance led by County Commission Chairman Jeff Phillips. Commissioner?
Bow with me, please. Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for the blessings of life and for your promise of an abundant life. God, we ask that you be with those in our community who are less fortunate. In this holiday season, we ask that you bless us and give us the true meaning of this holiday season in our hearts. God, we ask that you be with this commission as we do the business of Rutherford County, and may we act in accordance that what we do is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. We ask once again that you be with us. Bless us and bless Rutherford County. In God's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Thank you, Chairman Phillips, and it's good to see each and every one of you here this evening. At this time, we'll have the road call. Madam Secretary, in determination of a quorum.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Tettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have our quorum at this time, and now I ask for the approval of our minutes. I'll call on our Vice Chairman, Lee Bogel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes of the November 13th meeting and found those to be in good order. Therefore, I make a recommendation to approve.
I have a motion to approve our minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Minutes have been approved. Do we have any requests for a public comment?
No, sir.
We'll move on from there. Any items withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir.
Okay. Before we get into our new business, I'd like to say thank you to CUD for hosting us this past Friday. We had a training session at CUD dealing with things that are happening here in Rutherford County with the growth and what we have as far as our water. That is extended out to all our people that lives within this county. We learned quite a lot of things, and I think those members of this commission who were there, we spent four hours going over the things that, a lot of things I didn't know about, but I think it was something that's very important for us to use for training. And we really appreciate it, Jason, for your hospitality for last Friday. We'll move now into item seven of a new business. Item A, submitted for final plat approval. Go with number one. High Ship Acres, Vaughn Track, 23, 2090, three lots on 5.02 acres, zoned REM, located along High Ship Road. Jennifer Vaughn is the applicant. It includes a waiver request for lots of less than five acres off a private easement, 50-foot minimum private easement with width and its fire hydrant distance. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. As you stated, the applicant is looking to split this property into three tracks. Track one will contain the existing house and will have the road frontage along High Ship Road. Lots two and three will be new building lots and will rely on a private easing, excuse me, extending through Lot One. All the lots are going to exceed one acre in size. The existing septic system that is currently serving Lot One will be reserved for Lot Two, and Lot One will install a new septic system in the soil that's been identified that Mike is highlighting there on the screen. Information from CUD indicates a fire hydrant can be supported on the water line that's there on High Ship Road. After looking at the distance, it's very close, but I do think both of those lots are going to be within 1,000 feet. So I don't think that the fire hydrant waiver is going to be necessary. They've extended that off, just a little bit off the line, the way they're showing it. If you're looking at the closest point, it measures, depending on where you're measuring it, it measures right about 990 feet to Lot Three back there. Lot Two, since it's kind of a wider lot, so to speak, it's got less distance to it to the front. So I don't think that the waiver is going to be required for that. One of the issues we had that Chairman Reed had said was the 50-foot access easement width. You see that they have amended that to show 50 foot all the way down through. It doesn't quite measure 50 feet at this point. We did take a scale to it and do a little bit of measurement, especially when you get down between lots two and three toward the south end of the property. I have alerted the surveyor to that, that they do need to fix that. I think it was just a drafting issue. They'll also have to change the setbacks on lots two and three. I spoke with the applicant today. This is actually going to be for family purposes, his daughter's, one lot, one's going to get one lot, one's going to get the other. So with all that, it looks like the only waiver that's really going to be necessary is the tracks of, along the private easement that are going to be less than five acres. It appears, as I said, everything else is going to meet our regulations after all. With that, I know the applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Messengers, any questions for staff?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. Doug, the retention pond on Lot, whatever that lot is, down at the bottom.
Lot Two.
Lot Two. Is, that services that whole subdivision, correct?
Well, it's really just a, I think it was just a pond. I think that that pond doesn't exist anymore. I spoke with the applicant today, and apparently they've done some work back there, and that was not meant for any kind of drainage necessarily. It was really meant more for, it was just like a farm pond or something like that.
So it's not a detention pond?
It wasn't, it wasn't a detention pond that we had asked for.
Doesn't appear to hold water. Staff? Comments?
Well, considering that the changes have been made, it looks like the only waiver requested is for the size of those lots off the easement. In fact, it's for family purposes. Historically, the commission's been a little more lenient to that. I think overall that we're fine with it.
Does that include the fire hydrant?
I don't think it's necessary to have that in there, just based on the measurements I did today. We can make sure that the surveyor, well, can adjust the property lines enough if it becomes an issue, but I don't think, based on the measurements I did, I think it'll be all right.
Move to approve with the exclusion of the fire hydrant distance.
Motion been made to approve. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second. Commissioner Bogel, further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? It does pass. Now into item two. Susie Bird Estates, 23, 2091, four lots on 23.64 acres, zoned RL, located along Midland Road. James and Beth Smotherman are the applicants. Includes waiver request for fire hydrant distance. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant is proposing to divide this property into a total of four tracks. Three will be accessed off of a 50-foot access easement back to Midland Road. Lot One will contain the road frontage, as Mike is showing you on the map. All of these tracks are going to be five acres or larger, as you can see. This was a track that was subdivided off by deed within probably the last year or two, and we've seen, we'll actually see another one here a little later on the agenda. We've seen several of these subdivisions come before us. Since most of these lots are going to be outside of 1,000 feet of a hydrant due to the distance from the main road, they have requested a waiver for this provision and only be for lots three and four. Lots one and two will actually still be able to meet that distance requirement, so they're okay. It's just the ones that are a little further away. Beyond that, they did have a comment on here that the minimum pad floor elevations were a little too high. They have revised the minimum pad elevations down to 748. Of course, before this is recorded, we'll confirm that that's acceptable to our engineering staff. But beyond that, the plat's in good order with the exception of this, the waiver request for the hydrant for those two lots. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is also present if he has questions of her.
Messengers, questions or comments? Mr. Everwater?
Do you have a question? I can see where the easement across, access easement comes across the, what would I guess to be the sides of the lots, so the front of the lots, it's hard to tell. But anyway, it runs along the septic soil sites. Then I have to assume that the houses are going to be towards the more open end of the lot. Can they cross those soil sites with their driveways? I've never known that to be approved by.
Well, if you look at the plat on the screen, Mike's kind of highlighting it, they are showing a couple of proposed driveway locations that are outside of that soil area right there that he's kind of circling around. Yeah, he's zooming in a little bit. Now, if they were to put that driveway over their soil, I mean, that would just be soil they couldn't use or couldn't count. But it looks like they do have a little bit on each side that they could, they could sneak something, a quick little driveway back there. But they are showing a couple of driveway locations just because of that. So to answer your question, I do believe there's provision there in the event that they want to put their driveways right there. Looks like that's what they're proposing.
What's the history on this? As far as looking at this, is this where a farm's been split up and now we're re-splitting it up again?
Yes, sir. That's essentially what happened on this track.
So when we bought the property, we got lots one, two, three, and four?
Right.
Now we're breaking it back out with what I'd call those flag lots we talked about in the past.
Well, lots one, two, and three, one, two, three, and four, that would be the result if they record this. Right now, Mike's got it on the map on your, on the screen there. It's just, right now, it's just one big track of land. So if they get approval for this, they would split it into four tracks, again, all of them exceeding five acres in size. And it would be difficult for them to split it further because they're allowed to have three tracks off of the easement. This would max this out.
You know, the only thing I'm thinking is the history of what's next to it. Is this one's been split up, four and a half track like this?
Well, we've seen, yeah. I mean, since they've split that up, I mean, we've seen several different subdivisions. Like I said, there's another one on the agenda. It's not, it doesn't involve any flag lots or anything. It's just each one's got its own road frontage, and they're about two-plus acres apiece, if I remember right. We'll get to that one here in just a few minutes. But based on the zoning of the property and the amount of road frontage they have, you know, they're, they're within the regulations to ask for what they're asking for. Thank you.
More questions, comments, or would you like to hear from the applicants?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve. Second. Other questions? Comments? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? It has been approved. Susie Bird Estates has been approved. I just like saying Susie Bird Estates. I sort of like that name. All right, moving down to number three. Brewer Point, Section 1, 23, 2093, 54 lots on 52.38 acres, zoned PUD, located along Stewart Creek Road. Brewer Point LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in November of 2021. This final plat does appear to be consistent with that plan. There are, this is a PUD, so there are two approved minimum lot sizes in this development. Some were 10,000 square feet, and then there were some that were also 15,000 square feet. This section contains a little of both. Road improvements to Stewart Creek Road were a condition of approval in the PUD's pattern book. They are showing some improvements there. Mike, I'm going to let him discuss that in a little more detail here. Most of our comments have been addressed, but I will turn this over to Mike to let him discuss some of the road comments that he had.
All right, thank you, Douglas. So in looking at this, there were a couple sharp corners adjacent to the subdivision. This is one of them here, and I'll see if I can get this to turn on and show you. And what they're going to be doing with this is smoothing this sharp curve out and dedicating some right-of-way and moving, essentially moving this road into this location here. Likewise, at the intersection, well, the corner, just a little bit farther to the east, they will be bringing another road up to here, but we thought it best, what we're going to do is make this a T-intersection, and it will be a three-way stop right here. You can kind of see the road, Canter Drive. It'll come up, and this Stewart's Creek will make a, like I said, a three-way section right here. We will have approach, stop-ahead signs each way, and landmarkings in this area. But one of the things that we'd ask them to do and just some fine tuning, and I'll show you on the plat, this is where they're trying to dedicate the right-of-way. Now, the, a lot of the deeds went to the center line of the road, and they're showing this as existing right-of-way. Actually, that's the center line of the old road right here because it lines up to where they're, they're calling the center line over here. So there'll be some, a little fine tuning in this area, and then also in this intersection a little bit farther to the east. But all in all, they've addressed our comments. Like Doug said, we believe the plat to be in good order except for a few housekeeping measures.
Messengers, any questions? For the staff on Brewer Point?
When will those road improvements be started?
They've started already. They're, they're under construction with Phase One, and those were requirements for Phase One.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mike, will there be two entrances off of Stewart's Creek Road or one?
Two entrances right now, and I'll turn off the aerial. You might be able to see a little better. We're lining up with this road here, Altoga Court. There will be turn lanes here for both left turns into both the new road and the existing road. And then Canter Drive will be this three-way here as well. And we've also asked them to, for future sections, bring stubs to the adjacent properties. The property to the south has a lot of good soil on it, and so we've got a lot of stub streets to it. Turn on the soil just real quick. Let you see. So all this green soil is typically suitable, septic system soils. This is where they're doing their step system up front here, and all the lots will be in this area. Once you go farther to the east, the elevation climbs. It's a pretty substantial hill. Show you that real quick. So this will, in the future, will be walking trails and undeveloped common area. So it, this ridge will be preserved and have walking trails up in there.
How close is it to the creek?
There, Stewart's Creek's on the other side of Stewart's Creek Road. There is a little drain that runs on the southern edge here, if my stream layer will But Stewart, this is Stewart's Creek over here on this side, and I think there's a tributary. Let me turn on the hydro layer. Yeah, there's a little bit of a stream network at this, this edge here that it picks up. So, but Stewart's Creek's over on this side. The flood zone, I believe there's a little bit that touches Stewart's Creek Road, but it doesn't go up into this property. Just FYI, let me turn off, turn off these. So we're smoothing this corner up here. We're making this a three-way stop. They're going to make some improvements down in this intersection here. The highway department's been working with the adjacent property owner here to kind of enhance this. And then also, the highway department is working on smoothing this corner. This was a small three-lot subdivision here, so that's getting smoothed out as well. But there are improvement projects in the works right now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with all staff comments and road improvements.
Motion to approve. Motion to second. Mr. Everwater, further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Brewer Point has been approved. Item four, Spence Farm, resub. Jones Construction, 23, 2094, eight lots on 25.64 acres, zoned RL, located along Midland Road. Jones Construction Company is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. This was the other plat I was referring to when we were discussing the last, the Susie, sorry, Susie Bird Estates just a couple moments ago. The applicant, there's two tracks involved. Well, actually, there's four total, but they would like to split the existing properties into smaller tracks, if you will. The minimum size of this zone residential low density is one acre, but these tracks are all about two and a half acres or larger. Each one's going to have its own frontage. No private easements are involved. Due to the number of tracks, they do have to make sure that there's a hydrant within 500 feet of all of these tracks. We'll make sure that that is shown on the plat. With all the other subdivisions that we've seen around here, I don't think fire hydrants are going to be an issue. I know that there's been several that have been applied for. Most of the comments that we had on this have pretty much been addressed. Only one item, we did ask for them to put the square footage of each lot. They have the acreage, but a lot of times we like to see a table that has a square footage in the acreage, but that's a housekeeping matter. They have that on the soils chart where they've got the square footage of all the soil areas. We just typically see that for the entire lot area as well. Beyond that, this plat's in good order, and we'd recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Commissioner?
I was going to stand out a little bit and see the, I'm just wondering, these are small lots. What do the other lots around it look like? Well, out of character.
Well, I mean, most of these lots were split into, say, 10, 15-acre tracks, but again, the zoning allows them to go down to an acre. So what they're asking for is still greater than what the zoning allows. They could go down. Now, I don't think these tracks can be split up much smaller than what they've got because of soil issues and whatnot. So again, the zoning allows them, and there's no, there's no easing or waivers required of any of this. Everything's got its own road frontage.
Mr. Chairman, Doug, Mike, this does join one of these, some of these lots do join the Susie Bird Estates.
Yeah, the Susie Bird Estates. Yeah, he's highlighting it right there. That's right.
Other comments, questions?
I'd move we approve this based on staff comments.
Motion approved. Been second. Other comments?
I could, real quick. Doug, did you mention, if you did, I failed to hear it, did we require them to share driveways or anything to try to reduce those?
We did not. We did talk a little bit about maybe pairing the drives, but I mean, there's no requirement that we have that makes them do that, so we, that wasn't one of the comments we made.
Other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Spence Farm resub has been approved. Moving down to item five, Southern Harmony, Section 1, Phase 2A, 23, 2095, 95 lots on 39.03 acres, zoned PUD, located along Franklin Road. I don't know exactly how you want to say that.
Polty.
Okay. Holmes, Tennessee, limited partnership is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, thank you, sir. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in April of 2021. This final plat does appear to conform to that. This is, the next plat, there's two plats we'll be looking at for Southern Harmony. The first one, this one that we're looking at, is the subdivision proper, if you will. The next one will be the larger lots left over on part of Mr. Burgess's property. But you can see the layout there that Mike has, Lot 4,000 there at the very top. That's actually one that the county is proposing to place a public health and safety building on. We haven't looked at the final site plan on that yet, but there is a note on the plat about that to be dated to the county at a later date. Most of our comments that we had on this have been addressed. With that, Mike, I don't know if you had anything further that you wanted to talk about?
No, just, I talked to Jason Laxton with CUD earlier. The next plat has the step lots that will serve this section, so there's a little coordination that needs to happen. I guess the, they can go in at the same time, but officially, the step lot subdivision needs to be recorded first, and this follows soon after. But like Doug said, this is where they're donating land for a new public health and safety building, right here at Lot 4,000, just to point that out.
We just went through a step system education last week. How wide are these lots? This is on a step system, correct?
That is correct. These lots are, I mean, they're narrower lots, but keep in mind, the pattern book's already been approved for this, so.
Right, but they're saying, as we learned last week, there are a lot of issues with lots and step systems that are less than 60, 60 or feet wide, so come into problems with the smaller lots.
That's correct, yes.
Yes, Jason Laxton and John Claxton, I think, have become best friends when trying to coordinate all these minute items that go along with these lots. I think they've got them worked out. Is that correct, Jason, that you?
They're reviewing it. They're asking if we are.
Okay. They are reviewing it still, but it will have to meet all the requirements. So like, like Jason went over in the meeting, you know, there's, there's a required distance or size of a step easement, and then room for a driveway. They are pairing up the water easements, the water meter easements on that, so there's other coordination with electric and, you know, cable fiber optics and all that, and gas that has to be coordinated with this. But like Jason said, he's working on it with John Claxton with Homestead and Hutton.
Messengers, further questions or comments?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Have the motion made to approve and second. Other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Southern Harmony, Section 1, has been approved. Moving to item six, Southern Harmony, Section 2, Phase 1, 23, 2096, 13 lots on 90.61 acres, zoned PUD, located along Franklin Road. Polty Homes, Tennessee, limited partnership is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. Similar to the last section, this was also, the preliminary plan was approved back in April 2021, as we discussed. This portion of the development's a little bit different. These lots are larger than the lots we considered in the last plat, plus the road that's going to be accessing these lots is actually a public road. This will not be a private road like the rest of the subdivision will be. Again, most of our comments on here have been addressed. I have had some conversations with the, with the surveying team, the design engineer regarding the setbacks that are shown. The pattern book was, didn't really go into the setbacks for these lots, so typically they would just default back to our normal setbacks. It's really just the side. We can work with them on that. I don't, that's not something that I think we need to defer action on. These lots are large enough that we can make some accommodations, but we have had some discussions on that. Beyond that, again, this plat is in, is in pretty good order, and the issues that were discussed regarding the smaller lots really don't apply to this because these lots are larger. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, what about the, Doug, what about the, Mike, the step system?
Oh, yes, sir. Okay. So on this plat, you can see these two large lots. These will be the step lots for, for the Southern Harmony development, and these, you know, will need to be reviewed and approved. And these, you know, will need to be reviewed and approved by CUD and this will need to be recorded prior to the previous plat. And just for reference, former Mayor Burgess's house is right here. These are for his family, yeah.
Commissioners, other questions for the staff? I believe the applicant is wanting to say something.
Joey Wilson, Wilson &amp; Associates. Mr. Demossi, I just wanted to clarify the setbacks, what your thoughts were on getting those clarified before we go.
Well, it's really the sides that I think are the concern. Mike, just, can you zoom into the setback diagram there?
Oh, setback diagram. I got you.
Right there at the top. I mean, you're showing 20 on the rear, you're showing 50, 40 is only required on the fronts, so, I mean, if you want to do a 50, that's fine. It was really the side setbacks that was, I don't understand why you need a five-foot setback when you've got the lots as large as you are. Typical is 10. That was really, everything else, if you want to leave it a 50 front, that's fine. 20 is typical on the rear anyway. So it was just the side. Yeah.
Yeah. If you may want to answer.
Hey, everyone, John Claxton, Thompson-Hutton Engineering. I'm the civil engineering project manager for this project. So we were going back to, as Doug mentioned, the pattern book didn't explicitly mention setbacks for the Burgess-Homestead lots, Section 2, Phase 1. We did show the setbacks in the pattern book that was approved, not the pattern book, the preliminary plan that was approved back in '21, as well as the construction plans that were approved. So we just want to confirm, is it a condition of approval to change those or would you just work with us after this meeting? We just want to confirm that.
I think we can work with you after the meeting. Like I said, I mean, these lots are large enough where it shouldn't cause any issues, so, but I think we can work with you after the meeting with the others thing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners.
Doug, a motion to approve with staff comments would cover those concerns?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve. Second. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Southern Harmony Section 2 has been approved. Moving into item B, submitted for site plan approval. Item 1, new ready-mixed concrete plant, Irving Materials Incorporated, 233033. New construction of a 1,140-square-foot building, including silo for a concrete plant on leased area of five acres, actually 468-acre track, zoned 8I and REM, located along Twin Oak Drive. Irving Materials Incorporated is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant is proposing to construct a concrete batch plant on the existing quarry property. There is a second batch plant immediately to the north that you can see on the aerial that Mike has up there. Actually, that plant used to be in the location where this proposal is, so several years ago, it was moved to the adjacent tract and so the applicant is looking to place one back on this property that we have under consideration today. The applicant has indicated their desire for an alternative landscape plan, which is something that is in our regulations, just because of the fact that there's a reason there's a rock quarry here and it's the fact that there's just not a whole lot of soil. So they have made some provision on their landscape plan for some alternate tree plantings along some berms and everything. I'm okay with that. Like I said, they're doing the best that they can with what they have to work with. So from that standpoint, I think we're fine. There were a couple of other items that we had that they need to address. One of them, they don't have any septic soil on the property, so they are going to have to rely on a potential pump and haul situation from TDEC. They did get a letter from TDEC indicating that TDEC would be willing to accept an application from them to have that arrangement done. They will also have to show approval of that, but also they'll have to work with CUD from a water standpoint to make sure all their requirements are met and that goes along with all fire and building code requirements as well. So obviously, no permits will be issued or anything until we know that they have all those things in order. But beyond that, I think this plan is in decent shape and I'll let Mike discuss any comments they may have on the engineering side.
Right. There is an existing stormwater management pond and they're not really increasing the imperviousness of this site, but we did ask them to try to capture water that heads towards Twin Oak Drive and direct it towards the stormwater management area and they have done that. We'll just need a little tweaking done here. There's a little drainage speed hump on the existing driveway that's supposed to direct the water over to the side, so we'll need a little coordinating massage in with that, but other than that, it's in good order.
Commissioners?
Doug, if you could, I'm just a little curious. They were in one spot, they moved to another spot, now they want to move back to spot number one. Can you kind of bring us up to date as to what they've done?
Well, the one that was there originally was owned by somebody different and different company and they bought the tract directly adjacent to the north and that's why that plant was moved to the site right to the north. So the owners of the property are looking to lease this portion of the property to another batch plant. So that was the reason that happened, was several years ago, just, yeah, one was bought, got moved and the other one's just coming back in its place. Thank you.
Yeah. Here's 2016 aerial imagery. You could see the plan, it was up and running then and then I guess something happened and they decided to relocate to a different parcel.
I have a question myself. Now, what are we wanting to do as far as landscaping and things of that type?
Can you bring up that landscape?
I think they're going to paint rocks green. No, that was trying to be humorous, but.
Can you bring up the plan?
I heard, I heard the laughter out here. I'm just really waiting on it.
And if the applicant wants to come up and kind of explain the, what they're looking to do, I mean.
I'm always in favor of somebody improving what they got. I have no problem with that. I was just curious.
I can find it.
It's toward the end.
You know, I come from Rock Vale and I always want to see some way you're going to grow something on rock. I'm just always interested in that.
Yeah, there's existing, well, go ahead. The plan's up, so.
My name's Lindsay Miller. I'm the engineer working on the project. There is an existing berm that directs the water to the outfall location and we're going to improve the berm to direct the water and so it'll be a vegetated berm as well as the existing berm and vegetation that's already there.
I appreciate that. I just was curious to hear that and like I said, I'm always appreciative when someone is trying to do something a little extra there.
Mr. Chairman, along with Mike's sarcasm, they'll have to haul dirt in to make the berm. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Mike, and my other sarcastic question is how can they make that more impervious than the flat rock that's already there?
Well, you could seal up the cracks, is what you do, yeah.
Well, we're doing it all over the county. We're hauling field in to make, making yards all over this county, so I have no doubt they can do that. I'm just, I just appreciate that they're going to attempt to add a little bit of more environment to the, to the property and.
Now, there is, there is a little green up front here where they were going to put that little diversion berm and they're going to landscape it, but I don't know, did y'all ever probe and see how deep that was? No, okay. You can grow grass on it, but it's not much, yeah.
Okay. Just a question, I think.
Yes, two things. A cement plant like this or a ready-mixed plant like this really throws two red environmental flags up. One is the stormwater runoff mainly because of the dust. You get a lot of dust buildup on a track like this because you're, you've got a lot of pulverized limestone, you've got cement powder, you've got a lot of issues where they have to continue to water the parking lot, the area to keep dust control. TDEC will be on their case about that like they are currently already. So I just want to throw out there, if they, if they've got a good responsible plan already and have not been in violation of their dust control and their stormwater runoff, you know, the clean rainwater that hits that, when it picks up that dust, it turns into nice gray soupy water quickly and it's always a red flag for TDEC and for the county when they see that running down the ditch line. So I'm happy to make a motion to approve. I just want to throw caution to the wind that there are two environmental red flags on a site like this and dust control and water runoff is one of them. So as long as they're abiding and have their controls in place, that shouldn't be a problem. So I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion to approve.
I'll second it with staff comments.
We have a second over here for the comments. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? It has been approved. Okay, that's the business for this evening. Moving now to staff reports and other business. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Consistent with the Planning Commission's bylaws, we need to appoint a nominating committee for Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair for calendar year 2024. We have asked the three members, Jim Everwater, Charlotte P., and David Jones to be on that committee. They will make their recommendations at the second regular meeting in January. That'll be the daytime meeting. So we just need a motion to appoint those folks.
Motion to approve. I have the motion approved and a second. All those in favor say aye. It's like you've got a choice on every, on all of that right there. All right. Our next Planning Commission meeting will be at 6:00 PM on Monday, January the 8th, 20, that's 2024. We're not going backwards this year.
Yeah, I just got used to writing 2023 on everything and the date itself is correct, January 8th. I just forgot to change the year to four.
It's going to be 2024 and we're moving forward, is what our plans are. I have no other business unless somebody within the commission here has further business.
I may make just a quick comment. Yeah, I just want to, just, not a business item, but just a comment. As we come to the end of another year, I just want to say thank you to you all for all the work that you put in to the meetings and I echo what was said at the beginning of the meeting regarding our partners with CUD. You know, the fact that we were able to have such a very informative and helpful training session was because of the relationship we have with them, but I do appreciate their relationship. I appreciate the relationship we have with you all. I just pray that you all have a happy and safe Christmas and New Year. If you're traveling, I hope you're safe and we look forward to starting next year. We've got a lot of things that we are going to want to start studying, so just stay tuned.
Do we have some more comprehensive planning?
Yes, yes. We actually have, our next Steering Committee meeting will be next week. I don't have the time right off the top. I think it's like 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon with the Conference Plan Steering Committee. We're also going to be meeting with the, what they call the Intergovernmental Coordinating Task Group. That's made up of different governmental officials from the different municipalities and officials from the county. That's also going to be next week as well. So a lot, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes, but yes, we do have those meetings coming up.
Yeah.
At 1:00. Okay, thank you.
Yes, the, well, we're still going to be busy to the end of this year, especially with the comprehensive plan, but I want to echo what Doug has said here. All of you have worked hard. We've covered a lot of things this year. If you just think back on what we've seen here from wedding venues to a little bit of everything. So I appreciate all of you being here. I appreciate your comments, appreciate your input and what we're doing. And as they used to say, I think in the old Vaudreuil shows, Vaudreuil shows, you ain't seen nothing yet as we move forward. So appreciate you being here and I just want to wish every one of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And we'll see, see you all here again next year. We're adjourned.